Calling to order the meeting of the Imperial City Library Board of Trustees.
Ropel. Mia Hernandez.
Present.
Valentina Estes. Not present. Rachel Alexis Blackwood.
Present.
Magdalena Altamorano. Not present. Richard Montenegro Brown.
Present. Okay, let's do the pledge allegiance please. Please rise. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any adjustments to the agenda?
No, Mr. President, we do not.
And do we have any public appearances? Okay, moving on to special presentation. The Teen Makers Summer Program.
Good evening, everyone. Um, so my name is Victoria Spivas. I will be presenting the Teen Makers along with my teen interns who are also present with me. Um, okay, so I will be going over this presentation. We're gonna be talking about the first, a group of interns that we hired over the summer. So just a quick little overview for the Stronger Together Out of School Time Grant, which was what funds our Teen Makers project. The whole goal of this project is to provide an internship opportunity for teens where they can learn social, emotional, and professional skills while providing programming for school-aged children through Makerspace and gardening programs. So, this summer, we hired our four Makerspace interns. They're the first interns we've hired this entire project. They were hired in June twenty twenty and they began creating programs with a budget of five hundred dollars. The first program was launched on July eleventh, twenty twenty-two, and the programming was so successful that we actually began offering two sessions per program because there was such a high demand of parents and children that wanted to be part of these programs. Um, some of the wins that we've seen so far, um, parents love these programs and children really enjoy participating in them. Um, we actually made an Instagram reel from one of the programs and it went viral. We had over twenty-one thousand views and over a thousand likes on that reel. The Hotville Tribune also published an article highlighting the internship project in one of our interns programs. And then the Pearl Valley Press also published an article which featured one of the photos from one of our interns programs. So, I will introduce our Makerspace interns. Present, we have Sammy Couchman, Amber Moreno, and Madison Taylor. Not present is Isabella, so I will be speaking on her behalf. And first up, we have Sammy.
Uh, hi, everyone. Uh, my name's Sammy Couchman. And, uh, I'm from Raleigh, but, um, the reason I applied to this internship was because it seemed like a, a meaningful way to spend my last summer before I leave the college. And, um, it would also provide me with valuable internship experience and leadership experience as well that I plan on using in the future. Uh, my two programs were, uh, the Paper Airplane Workshop and the Race Car Workshop. Um, in the Paper Airplane Workshop, the kids used kits to make their own paper airplane and they got to, uh, fly through a homemade obstacle course that I made with rings. And the Race Car Workshop, they're able to build their own wooden race car with glue and they got to choose which kind they wanted and how to decorate it. So, those are my programs. And, uh, the pic, the two pictures on the left are from my, uh, Paper Airplane Workshop. Uh, the kids are wearing, uh, pilot hats that I gave out as prizes for completing the obstacle course. And on the right are two pictures from, um, my Race Car Workshop of, uh, me helping the kids build the, the cars and, um, uh, kid, uh, playing with the car. Thank you.
I'm gonna interject just a little bit. It was really great to watch the, um, both, all of the programs, but with the airplanes, the, um, parents actually got into it too. So the, the children had kits and then, um, there's one specific parent that had a yellow lined piece of paper and he made his plane. And I didn't notice until after I had posted the reel that his plane actually made it through his, um, the course. So I think he was very proud. So it was amazing. And last night's program with the race cars, everyone had a blast and, um, Sammy actually had trophies and, um, um, race, the, yeah, sunglasses with the, um, checker flag on it.
Alright, so next we have Isabella, so she's not present. But, um, Isabella wrote that she joined the internship because she wanted something to keep her busy this summer and she saw it as a great opportunity to give back to the community and gain some experience. Um, her two programs were clay crafts and fabric painting. So for the clay, the children got to play with polymer clay and they also got to play with air-dry clay. So they're different textures, so they could kind of, um, feel the difference between both. And then the fabric painting, um, they were given a tote bag or they also had the option of bringing in their own T-shirt that they could paint and they use fabric paint to create whatever design they wanted. Um, and so here are some pictures from that program. Um, in the bottom left corner, we have a whole family. These are two siblings and they were admiring the different stencils that they got. And then at the top left were some of the clay programs as well. And in the bottom right, we also have another, um, parent and daughter painting the tote bag. So it was really cute to see, um, all of them get very, very creative with this type of project. And next up, we have Amber.
Hi, good afternoon. My name's Amber Moreno and the reason why I joined the internship was because I wanna be a teacher when I grow up and I thought it was gonna be a great experience like to, for life skills and to help me become a teacher. I also wanted to do something fun for the summer and make a positive impact in the community. The two programs I did were the Neon Craft Party and the Slime Mania. For the Neon Craft Party, the kids got to learn how to make a glow-in-the-dark lava lamp as well as a glow-in-the lar- dark lantern. And they got to learn, learn a little bit of sc- scientific way of how it worked. And for the Slime Mania one, they got to make fluffy slime. When I was little, I always wanted to make fluffy slime and slime in general. Uh, I, I couldn't because my mom said I would make a mess. And seeing the kids do it, have, they have fun and it's a little messy, but they have fun. Um, over here you can see on the bottom, you can see the, sorry. Well, you can see the pictures from the programs, two are from the glow-in-the-dark one and the other one is from the slime. As you can see, it looks like everyone's enjoying and having a good time.
Thank you, Amber. And next up, we have Madison.
Um, hello, my name is Madison Taylor. Um, when I first found out about this internship, I was super excited. I had just turned fifteen. So that made me eligible to apply for this opportunity. And I wanted to apply to the internship because I thought it would be a great opportunity to gain experience and give back to my community. This internship was also a great use of my time during the summer break. I felt like if I was able to do something for, for my community, I'd be able to help everybody just have fun and have a better summer. The two programs that I did were dry ice experiments and raised salt paintings. For the dry ice experiments, kids were able to participate in hands-on learning while experiencing the properties of dry ice and getting into that fantastical science bit of it and making them realize how much science can be fun. For the raised salt paintings, kids got to, um, do the, find the opportunity to express their creative side by working with paint and glue to create beautiful crystallized designs slash drawings. So kids were able to create their own designs and just go wild and express their creativity. Um, the bottom left is, the bottom left and the top right are showing kids' creative sides and how they're able to create different designs by using glue and making it all crystallized with the salt. Um, the bottom left and the bottom right is showing the dry ice experiments and showing all the properties of dry ice, showing the cool side of science and making them realize how much science can, how much fun science can be. And as you can tell, I thought the kids had a lot of fun and I know I also had a lot of fun working with the kids doing their experiments.
Thank you to all the interns and thank you to all of you for listening to our presentation.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
At this time, I'd like the record to reflect, um, Valentina Estes on site at six eleven.
I'll go ahead and, um, add, uh, President and, and members of, of the board that this coming Wednesday, um, not this Wednesday, excuse me, next Wednesday during the city council meeting, uh, the, all the Teen Makers will be presented their five hundred dollar scholarship checks and there will be a photo opportunity with a large presentation check along with a certificate of, um, appreciation.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. Uh, do we, uh, have anybody calling for approval? I'll go ahead and call for approval then. That's fine.
I second.
Motion passes four zero.
We'll move on to the action items. We have, uh, E one, discussion and or action, selection of Imperial City Library Board Vice President.
President, Miss, uh, Trustees of the Board, the Library Board Vice President relocated and was no longer able to serve on the board. Bylaws state that the officers of this board shall be a president, a vice president, and a secretary, which the vice, which the president and vice president shall be elected annually from the board's own number. The vice president shall, in the absence of the president, perform the duties of the president. The president presides at meetings and appoints members to special committees. Based on the bylaws of the City of Imperial Library Board of Trustees, staff recommends a vice president be elected by the board.
Well, considering that, um, uh, Trustees Altamorano and Blackwood had been here the longest with us and, and Trustee Altamorano wasn't here, I'd like to motion that, um, Trustee Blackwood be the vice president. If she's willing.
I don't have a problem with it at all, though none of anybody else in that wants to.
I second the motion.
Motion passes four zero.
Okay, moving on to E two. Uh, discussion and or action, full-time limited-term literacy coordinator.
The Imperial Public Library applied for and received two grants that include funding for a part-time literacy coordinator for each grant. The library currently employs a limited-term, part-time literacy coordinator who has been actively involved with both grants since the application process. The coordinator has demon- demonstrated ability to manage both grant, both grant projects through her implementation of activities for both grant projects, maintaining required rec- records, assisting with narrative and financial reports, and ensuring the grant's terms and, and conditions are met. The twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three municipal budget includes the two part-time limited-term literacy coordinator positions funded through the grants. The position only exists on the part-time salary schedule. In order to convert the two part-time positions to one full-time position, city council will need to adopt the reclassification of literacy coordinator and add the limited-term full-time position to the Teamster's salary schedule. A fully burdened cost of the full-time position has been calculated and a budget modification will be made to the grants uh, to move the required additional funding to support the salaries and benefits. There will be no impact to the general budget, budget. It is, is, it is requested that the library board provide the recommendation to city council to adopt the reclassification of literacy coordinator and add the limited full-time term position to the Teamster's salary schedule. And I'll stand for any questions.
You couldn't be a, a second person?
At the time that we had, we were searching for a literacy coordinator at the very start of our previous, um, um, grant with our early learners, we did have a difficult time filling it. Uh, we did end up with an excess of, I, I'd, I'd wanna refer to, um, the amount without guessing the amount. We had a large amount that we had to reallocate to supplies, um, because we didn't spend all the monies on, um, on, on salaries. Um, we have a great person working for us right now and, uh, when you find someone like that, that's, that puts her full heart into the job, you wanna hold on to that person. Um, and so, um, that is the reason we're requesting to move forward with this, yes.
Just to know, I know you mentioned two grants, but we had several grants. Which are the two grants that are covering these people?
I apologize about that. Um, the two grants that are covering, uh, the salaries are the, they're both Stronger Together grants provided by the California State Library. One is for the Out of, uh, School Time Grant, which is a Teen Makers project. And the other is the early learning, um, it's the Stronger Together Early Learning Project. And that will be our Sprout Growing Together program that provides, um, gardening programs for, um, early learning with families, um, and a garden at the library.
Oh, finite grants, what happens in a year or the term of the grant?
The term of the, it's a limited-term position, so as soon as the position is, or as soon as the grant monies are spent or when the grant term is over, uh, the position is, um, over. Um, I will add that, um, the person who's filling the position currently actually, um, assisted in the application of both of these grants and made that happen without her. Um, I'm, I can't say they would have been submitted on time. So, um, she is very, um, um, helpful with grants.
If we wanna use talented, lose talented people, will there be the opportunity, the possibility of absorbing it down the road?
I'm sorry, one more time?
The possibility of absorbing the cost of the position down the road somehow?
Oh.
Uh, if it's not grant-funded in the future?
That would be something that we would want, want to, um, work, work with during the budget process, um, and take to council when we're looking at a new fiscal year. But we're always looking at, um, grant opportunities.
The one more question that I had is, so this person has been working on both grants right now, right?
Correct.
So she working twenty hours in each grant or she's working thirty hours for both grants?
She's currently, um, we started off where she was working up to thirty hours. Um, she's currently working as a limited-term, um, employee, forty hours.
Basically just.
Right, limited, uh, limited-term, um, or part-time employees, we, um, they have, they're allowed up to a thousand, one thousand hours. Um, so, yeah, so if, if she stayed the same part-time, once the one thousand hours is up, she would be finished with the, um, position. But as a full-time employee, she would be able to work forty hours, um, plus receive benefits, which is what adds to the cost of the position. Her actually, actual salary is less than, um, the funding that we brought in. And, and just for clarification purposes, from a legal standpoint, we're only talking about the position itself, not the person. So all the questions about funding and everything because we'll have to, to run it through, um, and all, all of the other comments are completely relevant and, and the positions, but how, how we fill them, um, is something that we'll have to make sure we discuss later. Yeah.
Any, any motions on the floor? Or further discussion? I'll motion that we.
I'm like, I'm like trying to like try to say it correctly. Um, so yeah, I, I guess I make the motion to, um, convert the position to full-time limited term, um, for the literacy coordinator.
Motion passes four zero.
Okay, moving on to E three, discussion interaction, behavior and library use policy.
Uh, President, uh, Board of Trustees, uh, the, every member of the public has the right to ex- access library resources. However, user behavior may interfere with their access. Policies and procedures are necessary to ensure the effective delivery of service to provide access to library resources and maintain a safe and healthy environment. In order to protect all library users' right to access library facilities, to ensure the safety of users and staff, and to protect library resources and facilities from damage, the library's governing authority may impose reasonable restrictions on the time, place, or manner of library access. The Imperial Public Library currently has a set of rules, staff enforces. However, it does not have policies and procedures. A draft of prohibited conduct on library property has been developed for the library board to review. Upon satisfaction of the board, it is requested for the board to recommend that council adopt the policy once reviewed and approved by the city attorney, which will include disciplinary process and appeal process. The adopted policies and procedures will be presented to the library board every one to three years for review as recommended by the American Library Association. And I will stand for any questions.
Joked about it a little earlier, but why is it so extensive and specific and lengthy?
There's a lot more that could be added. And that's why every one to three years it should be reviewed, um, to address, um, the ever-changing world that we live in. Uh, the library is experiencing some issues that we have in the past. Um, so there is some specifics in there that we have, um, have added that are similar to, um, other libraries', um, rules, um, that they have. Um, if there's anything specific in there, I can, I can address it if, if you.
What specifically did you add as a result of something that's been going on?
Um, I can look at the highlighted items. I did sit down with staff and we, um, looked through several, um, several rules and identified what best supported us as library staff to be able to enforce, enforce in the library. Uh, currently, um, we do have, um, issues with, um, patrons who come in that may be exposing their upper torso. Um, and so that's something that we've added to the rules is, um, it's not just no shirt, no suit, shoes, no service, but, um, no removing your shoes in the library because that's been happening, uh, which that gets in the way of, um, pedestrian traffic and could trip somebody. Um, and then just exposing themselves, it's just not the environment that we want to provide for a, a welcoming, healthy environment.
Uh, Mr. President and Board, I, I would just say, the, the, I hear about these issues and, and I think your, your question about the spec- specificity of the rules is an effort to make sure that they're, they're clear to everybody, right? And it's a balance. Obviously, one, we wanna give everybody an opportunity to use the resources in the library, but it isn't without limits. And, and, and the staff has been having issue with, with the treatment they receive from some patrons. Uh, there are hygiene issues and so you'll see in here, for example, our bathrooms aren't for the purpose of bathing. Uh, uh, and the idea with the specificity is that if you're gonna tell somebody that they can't avail themselves of a resource, we want them to be, we wanna be clear about why. Uh, and that, and that it's a, and it's based on, uh, wanting to make sure that our employees are protected and the environment of the library is protected. So it's a balance. As I understand it, one thing that you're, that will be coming back to has to do with an appeal process. Should somebody, uh, be asked to leave the library on some semi or permit or even potentially permanent basis. Uh, but.
That's what I was gonna ask. Is it, is it intended that this is kind of a, you know, you're eighty-six, you're gone after the first offense or three strikes, you're out or? How would?
Yeah, I think it's gonna depend on the nature of the situation. Like I said, we have, we have some, uh, uh, I think the staff is on a first-name basis with a lot, with a lot of folks who, uh, who create the issues. Uh, and, uh, uh, I, I just wanna be sure that our employees feel comfortable and safe in their work environment. Uh, and, and so to the extent they, they don't feel that way or if there are hygiene issues, uh, and what's left behind when people do leave, uh, there are issues with that, uh, and, uh, uh, so it creates problems not only for the library staff, but for buildings and grounds who have to come in behind, uh, everybody and, and clean up. So, I think, uh, hopefully that whatever, whatever, uh, process is used, we, we wanna make sure it kind of fits a- as opposed to having a one-size-fits-all. Uh, we wanna make sure that whatever the, uh, punishment, if you wanna call it that, uh, kind of fits the situation. But like I said, it, the, the genesis of this comes from, uh, the fact that, uh, we have folks come in that are, I'll, I'll, I'll say rude, it's beyond rude, uh, to, to library staff uh, and, 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 uh, make use of the library difficult because of the hygiene issues they bring with, with them and, and it makes it not pleasant for other patrons as well as staff.
It does definitely affect, um, the patrons. Our, our library is a lot busier than what you imagine as a library and they do get exposed to, um, some, um, experiences that they should not be exposed to, especially, um, we don't want that exposure to children.
Isn't this posted in the library now? I mean.
No, it, uh, it will be posted online and, um, at the library once it's adopted.
I, I believe there are rules now and I, I, I assume the rules that we now have are available.
Yes.
I, I don't see anything wrong with these rules. As like a mother of a six-year-old, um, I wouldn't want her to see anything that is really inappropriate, um, but also for staff. Like, there's no reason that you guys need to deal with. Like, some of this stuff is crazy. Um, so if we have to make a motion, I make a motion.
I second.
Motion passes four zero.
Thank you. We get to move on to the fun stuff now.
Or, uh, that is discussion interaction on board org- Or uh that is discussion interaction on board organization.
Mr. President, members of the um board, um let me see here. I'm lost, so excuse me for a moment. Okay. A presentation was provided during the regular meeting of the library board on July twelfth. It was recommended to bring back the discussion for the regular meeting on August tenth, which is, or excuse me, August ninth, which is today. Um, we have been discussing uh with, with the board um the um best use of the board's time uh for what services they want to focus their time on. Uh it was my recommendation at the last board meeting that the board uh continue as a library board. Um, um foc- with the focus on the public library, there are a lot of resources and a lot of needs with the library, and it is required by the state. Um and that was my recommendation, but um this is bringing it back to you, so you're able to continue the discussion.
Our PowerPoint presentation?
Yes.
I apologize.
No, that's, yeah. And we can carry this on to the next meeting, and I can send you the PowerPoint if you'd like that.
Yeah, I would like to see the PowerPoint. I don't know. I'll make a motion to continue the item to the next meeting.
I second.
A motion passes four zero to continue subject discussion action on board organization, item E four, to the next Board of Trustees meeting that will be held September thirteenth at six P M.
I'm moving on to reports.
This is where I was confused and got excited. Excuse me. Okay, Mr. President, um Board of Trustees. Um, so I'm presenting to you uh the director's report about the summer programs, and um so the summer as I learned, okay. Uh the summer, this, this summer, the library presented a six-week um summer reading program featuring Read Beyond the Beaten Path. Um, read, the reading program was for early learners, children, tweens and teens, and adults. The summer reading program is funded through the general fund, and support materials are funded through the California Library Association. Programming was provided by our four part-time library assistants and early learning literacy coordinator. A total, a total of a one hundred and thirty-eight pa- patrons were served with a waitlist of one hundred and eleven youth. The lunch at the library program consisted of meal service and programming at the library and pop-up programming at Teal Wagner Elementary School. The lunch at the library program served youth meals and programming during the summer and provided teens' um youth development while they were employed to assist with the program. And this was funded through the California State Library. This was uh the U C, uh excuse me, the Farm to Summer Program was a new program as part of the Lunch at the Library program, and I think we got our money's worth. Um, it, um we had a partnership with U C Farm Smart, and it is amazing. You need to bring your six-year-old to the program and your little one. It, they have a great experience. Um, I'll move on. There's just so many great opportunities. With a grant budget of three hundred and fifty dollars, U C Farm Smart is providing five programs experiencing Imperial Valley crops, including corn. Um and I can't tell you what all they did with every single one. They experienced it visually, tasting, hearing, um I sensory, their touch, everything. Um, uh the corn, melons, milk, they got to milk a, a makeshift cow. Um, and carrots, and I'm not sure what the last one is, but this Thursday is gonna be carrots. An average attendance is forty-nine children at each event in this community room. We have to remove all tables and chairs, and it's sitting re- um floor, sitting space only. We actually have the Navy Base Preschool that brings um out their children as well. So this Thursday at eleven, eleven-thirty? Eleven-thirty? This Thursday at eleven-thirty and next Thursday at eleven-thirty. Um it's really worth going to. And then our Teen Makers program, we kicked off our first cohort of teens, and they did an amazing experience. Um, every single one of the teens, I really hope they, I, I, they look like they enjoyed um the opportunity that they received through this grant. Um and in addition to the programs that they prepared, planned with a budget of five hundred dollars, they also provide, um were provided some um um, some opportunities for um um professional development. So it was, it was, it was amazing group, and I believe we do have, we have a lot of applications now. Um, our next um cohort is for the fall program, and the applications are open until August nineteenth.
Big difference, first, first call for applications in this?
I believe so. I'll have to look at, um. Yeah, um we did reach out to, because we do have the agricultural component for this one, so we'll be um um accepting eight interns rather than four. Four will be for the ag component. Um, the other four will be the same as this program. Um, and we did reach out to the Imperial F F A um um instructors, and they're notifying their um ag class, ag students. And then we have our ongoing programs. We have our um I C O Storytime, which is going to be Thursday, this, this, tomorrow? Okay, tomorrow. Our Razor Reader Program, uh which we just had this morning, it was, it was, it's amazing. And that's all for zero to five um ages. Libraries on the Spectrum, I believe it's this Friday. I believe so. Um and then our Family Literacy Program, which is grant-funded through the um California State, State Library. Uh our literacy program as well for adults, and we're still waiting to hear word from the um C L L S, which is the California Library Literacy Services uh for the English as a Second Language um um program. They said that um August, we should be getting word on that. Uh we also have our Home Connectivity Kits, um that provides the Chromebook hot, hotspot and, and case, and then we do have our online um um online resources as well, and I'll stand for any questions. I'll add, right before this meeting, I received an email uh from the grant coordinator for our Zip Books program, and being that the Zip, the Zip Books budget was released late, we didn't spend all our funds because we received seventeen thousand dollars, and I think we had six months to spend it. And they're giving us until the end of August to um spend, spend it, so, yeah, I, so, order your books. I believe this is the end. Thank you very much.
Great report. Thank you. On to trustees reports. Any of the trustees have anything to report?
I've been waiting the whole meeting to say this. Um, so I gotta bring my daughter to the slime mania, and she had a blast. I watched her from a distance 'cause I just wanted to observe, you know, I wanted to see how the kids were doing and everything, and they did so good, you did so good. Um, she had a blast. There were so many things to make slime, and she's like, Mom, I can make it smell, I can make it, and I'm like, oh, calm down. But she had a blast, and we took a really nice picture outside and everything, so I'll show it to you later, but no, I love it, I love, and she had never been, she's like, I wanna get a library card, so it was like a whole experience. So thank you guys so much.
Thank you. That, that will go on a report.
Oh, yeah.
I'm gonna review a section of the library for the.
Well, I just wanted to add that I went to the ice cream. Social, I guess, right? I, I just gonna say, those kids were so happy. Parents were happy. I emailed it to my clients from my business, and a lot of them showed up after I left, 'cause I had to go, but they keep going, we're here, are you coming back? I'm like, no, I actually have to work, but it was a great event. Goodness to you. Thank you for fixing the calendar to do the five days, it's so much easier.
Okay.
I've been sharing it to everybody, and everybody says it's a lot easier to read, and I think they're coming more, like people from my neighborhood are coming over, and they're asking me about how to help the library now till they know I'm involved in it. So make it easy when you do the calendar, we can, all of us share to our friends and family. Thank you.
Thank you for the idea. Thank you.
Anything, Dan, do you?
I'll just comment that I love all the posts on social media and stuff. I love to see what you guys get up to. Like, um, some of the events I wasn't able to bring my daughter to, but like, I love seeing like everything that was happening here, and like, when there was like the dinosaur, I don't know what was going on, I was like, oh my gosh. But it just looks amazing. Yeah, and it makes you wanna come and like see what's going on, so.
The dinosaurs will be coming back. Victoria's planning a dinosaur story time, so.
Okay, if there's not anything else, I will adjourn the meeting.
Maria, we have two costumes.